...council special meeting minutes from November 5th.
Counsel special meeting minutes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
I'm staying.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yep.
Motion passes five yeas to one at the center. This evening, I have the pleasure to have a special presentation for our Tolls, Creer, and Technical Center students, our cadet. Along with Chief McKee, if you would like to join here. The following students always have helped us out with our Fourth of July event. We'll hand it over to Chief if they need your...
Charge us out.
Always, obviously, that's what actually helped us for the Fourth of July event. They did all the partying and some...
Sure. Yeah, we're just saying now.
So, yeah, like I was saying, they always help us out, the Fourth of July event. They handle all the party. We actually get to hear all the people yelling at them, getting ready to be police officers for about time. So anyhow, we just want to show our appreciation tonight. We're going to offer them or present them with a certificate. And I also have a check for Tolls to show our appreciation for what the guys have done.
So the Fourth of July is a huge event for Plain City, and it takes many, many people to help it be a successful event. And so without your help, we couldn't have made it through the directing of traffic and assisting the public. And so all the skills that you gained are truly invaluable to us here in the village. So as I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate of appreciation. It says, "It is my pleasure as mayor of Village of Plain City to recognize each person as a cadet enrolled in the criminal justice program at Tolls, Creer, and Technical Center. They have graciously volunteered their time for this and operational matters during Fourth of July celebrations in the village. The volunteerism and dedication to public service in the Village of Plain City is noteworthy and deserves to be celebrated. The village is pleased to be able to recognize community members who find ways to serve their community. So on behalf of the Village of Plain City, thank you." So our first cadet is Caitlin Billington. Yes, they have her. Our next cadet is Reagan Jackson. Grace Kavicki. Jane and Musa? Not here, okay. Sean Murray. Luke Self. It's Ty White. And we also have two that are not here, Jacob Wright as well. So let's get them all.
I'd really like to say thank you to, at first, he was actually their instructor, but commander at the, at Tolls. So we wouldn't be able to do this without him. He's always one to lend a hand every time we need him at the, at the village or even with the police department and stuff. So again, I think we should give him a round of applause, too.
Come on.
Why don't you and I go in the middle of them and put others aside? So then here, we'll go three. So three and three. One more. We need a giant clap.
All righty. One, two, three, four, five, six.
I read it quick. Hold on, hon.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much.
Dinner's on me? No, it's just...
You guys are more welcome to say, but...
Take that. Thank you. Moving into our visitors portion, we have one visitor, and it's Robert... I just want to make sure, yeah. I, I started second guessing myself again.
Yeah, three minutes. Here we go. So anyhow, I'd like to make some more comments about the park time campground that we're going to be discussing tonight. I had it all written out, but Linda's memorandum from November 5th, I had to change everything. Hundred and eighty days is in a county year is, is perfect. It provides additional income to the park, which is only projected to do one hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal '26. Provides additional sending of Thursday reservations and reduces IT costs and reduces staff costs for tracking reservations. Offering local residents the first option of reservations prior to the season is a great idea. I like that. Closing the park in the wintertime, I support that. It cleans up your park. RVs that winterize their undercarriages aren't as attractive as most people like. This year, you're going to do about three hundred and thirty-five thousand, but you're only projected to do one fifty next year with the loss of winter reservations and seasonal limit stays. Your short-term, people like me in the summertime, spend about a hundred and eighty days. I think we provide about seventy percent of your revenue. And revenue is important to stay to every city, village, and town. So I would suggest that you keep the one hundred and eighty days, maybe implement more regulations and stipulations to campers that stay, which will give you the quality campground that you want. It's not really about the length of stay that bothers the council, I think. RVs look like RVs. It's the quality and looks of the RV, people staying in the park. If you're not interested in a hundred and eighty days, maybe a sixty-day stay, two weeks out, might be better than thirty-day, two weeks out, because it gives you less paperwork for the office staff to track their day reservations. IT costs could go up on your camp spot. You don't have to change that and monitor that quite... Quite regularly. Maybe you could stay over a little later than November, you know, maybe January or December, gives you more revenue. You could mandate that all RVs are RVIA regulated. That's Recreational Vehicle Industry Association. This association regulates foreign regulations and standards of all RV manufacturers. I have a sticker right on the side of mine. You could also implement a ten-year rule. The parks have that, where you can't have a RV that's older than ten years unless it's approved by, by a manager or staff. You can send a picture in. Mine's ten years old. Looks brand new, I think, except for the front cap is having troubles. But a ten-year, ten-year rule might be interesting to do. Not really here to try and cause problems. We have interest in Marysville, the closest thing I've found that I think I'm going to stay in next year unless I can find some way to be here is forty miles away. So it's going to be an hour drive for me to come to Marysville to see doctors and people like that. So I hope you'll discuss it before you vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. The ten-year, isn't that, don't we have a rule for the ten-year?
Yes.
The long-term.
The long-term stays.
Okay.
Moving, that is our only visitor for this evening. So moving into reports. Over the last couple of weeks, tomorrow is our Veterans Day ceremony, and it is at 10:00 AM at Jonathan Alder High School. So want to invite the public to come out and support our veterans. And our fourth graders who will be presenting, as well as our band and choir, will be performing as well. Thank you to staff and police for their help with Trick or Treat. Boo with the Blue was great, and the weather made for a nice evening, even though there is a lot of chatter online that we should move it, but appreciate staff's efforts in that. Working with staff on holiday events and activities, so make sure you help promote the coloring contest within our neighborhoods and holiday decorating contests that are coming up. So the, needs a lot of help to reach some of our residents, even though we communicate very well in, in the village. Just maybe in our own neighborhood groups and friends and neighbors, encourage them to participate. I've been helping to coordinate our community partners with, for ways to give back this season, so I'm going to be working with Mr. Evans later on this week. We have DNA Toy Drive, Carly's Sock Program, which is already collecting socks out in the entryway, as well as Santa Danny for Dogs is coming back in Santa for seniors. So look for those in always our food pantry. You can use a lot of donations as well this time. Ms. Lupton and I met with Congressman Carey last week and his aide to discuss our uptown projects and need for assistance for funding them. We took him to the depot and showed him the plans for expansion of that project, as well as bicentennial park, AKA the Flatiron. And he immediately, when we showed him the area, he said, "Oh, yes, safety is your number one goal here." So it was refreshing to hear his input on how to bring those forward, those projects forward to, to getting funded. And also, we had the grand opening on Wednesday of Pizon's Coffee and Ice Cream and Donato's Pizza, so encourage everyone to go and support that new business. It was a great concept. I know when you first hear of coffee, ice cream, and pizza, you're kind of like, "That's an interesting thing," but it is their first franchise location like that, so it's very unique to Plain City. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lupton, our village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. We just concluded the bicentennial park, 161 open house meeting, right before this meeting. As you could see, we had a great turnout. I was really surprised at how many people we got, a lot of comments, so we'll come help with comments, work with ODOT and the engineer on responding and implementing some of the feedback into the future design. So thanks, everybody, for attending that. We'll be at the Veterans Day Ceremony tomorrow as well. And then I wanted to note that the aggregation, both gas and electric issues passed pretty solidly last week, so we'll be working on the RFQ for the consultant, trying to get that out in the next couple of weeks, and then just continue to move forward along with that process.
Thank you, Ms. Lupton. And Ms. Sonnet, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned in a personal, no, work session earlier this month about the health insurance. Got our first solid quote from a different carrier, same plan practically what we have right now, unfortunately, is forty-seven percent increase, but it's better than the quote that we received from our current carrier. And so I feel confident that we at least have something in the same timeframe. Ms. Lupton and I, today, we're going to plug these numbers in to our budget, so you're going to see the changes in the second reading of the November reading. I don't like it, but it's better than what we received before, so. And also, the...
Sergeant?
Howard requested a records meeting to amend their records retention schedule, so we have that on the books for next Monday at four o'clock, so that's all we have.
How much of that forty-seven percent will be passed on to the employees?
Well...
Is it like an even?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. It's forty-seven percent will go to nine percent of what they're currently paying, so it's, yeah. Just to give you, it's like three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars increase overall for the budget.
And nine percent of that's on me?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Sonnet. Chief McKee?
Yes, thank you. As you indicated before, the police department's Boo with the Blue event was well-attended. Trick or Treat was also, it went well, and we were blessed that the rain stopped right before the event. Myself, Lieutenant Jask was toward the Delaware County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Academy, where Cadet Ryan Mulder is attending. We also met with him and some of his instructors. He's progressing very well, was their thought on that. And Officer Bailey, Boeck, is doing well with the FTO training and is still on track of being on, being released from the training, probably right at the beginning of the year or just a little bit after the year. She's doing very well. Officer Flowers and Officer Boeck spoke to the elementary pre-class concerning the inter, interaction with police officers and their very first interaction with the police. And then all officers successfully completed their environmental qualifications. Sergeant Howard completed a subject patrol instructor course. Officer Flowers completed a cyber training. And then Sergeant Prager completed lead stack training. The police department and the police department anticipated, anticipated in the Union County Drug Takeback, over eighty-six, eighty-six pounds of prescription drugs were collected. You can only imagine how many pills it takes to make eighty-six pounds. So that went very well, and just a reminder, coffee with a cough will be November 17th at the New Grounds Coffee Shop from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. And then the PD will be hosting Protect Your House Training for church leaders and members on November 19th, here at, or here at Council Chambers, from 6:30 to 8:30. So I have it just...
Thank you, Chief. Moving into our discussion items, we have twenty-two six camping policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Seth has been working after some input from the Parks and Recreation Commission, council discussions, and then staff, obviously, who manage the camping every day. They've come, Ms. Granger and Mr. Kitsch have come with a recommendation, just to kind of help steer tonight's conversation, so we can determine the path forward and implement into the system before the end of the year. I don't know, Ms. Granger, do you want to do the highlights of it?
Sure. I'm not going to go over every single talking point, but generally, if we go through the, the menu that was created, the initial change is that, effective January 1st of 2026, we're going to be closing annually for the winter season, which kind of harkens back to how we used to operate, actually. We only began doing winter camping when we put in the new gravel sites that had the water capability for the lines not to freeze. So the proposed annual schedule would be closing date November 1, reopening date April 1st. So basically, from November 1st through March 31st, we would be closed. I won't go through all the rationale, but there are, you know, some reduction in operating costs. There is some preventative measures with that that we don't have for freezing water lines and things such as that, because we still do have that, even though we winterize and we heat tape all the water hydrants. It does give us some extra time for annual maintenance on our sites. So we've actually, you know, previously, we've implemented those changes. So we've sent out direct communications to any winter campers, so we've tried to already mitigate any of the issues we have with doing that this year. Some of the stay limit that I think council has, has discussed, and we can certainly discuss tonight if you would choose to, beginning April 1st, campers would be limited to a maximum stay of thirty days. And speaking with Denton, what we kind of came up with would make sense, because some of this will have to definitely be manually managed. There's no way that we can get the system to automatically do thirty days and then off and on in thirty days. Some of this just actually has to be monitored by staff. So the recommendation, really, I leaned on Mr. Kitsch for that, he is, you know, boots on the ground, is to have a maximum stay of thirty days. So what we would do would be a fourteen-day absence, a mandatory absence. So you could book for thirty days, but then you would not be able to be at the campground for fourteen days.
Could we have some sites that, if we wanted to go longer, just have some sites that were sixty-day or ninety-day? You know, that not, like if you had, like, how many sites do you have out there?
Fifty-six RV sites.
Okay. I mean, could you have some of them that were tagged that could be longer than the thirty days?
That's the council's discretion. Sure. I mean, sure. That's my short answer. So basically, when you implement those changes, it's recommended that the, the camping season, you would have, basically, you'd have thirty days there, and then your fourteen days off would be about forty-five days. So if you do the math, your, your total stay would be about a hundred and twenty days maximum at the campground. It, it will definitely, definitely take some folks out of that long-term camping cycle, for sure. Online availability, I know that was brought up as a point of discussion for site six through ten. Just for the adification of council, you know, most state and federal campgrounds actually have that sort of first-come, first-served campground, so that's nothing weird or unique to us. We did that in the past, because it gives us some flexibility for people who come in at the last minute. You can put them in site six through ten, because you know they're not going to be booked. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility for that, and also gave us flexibility for some long-term campers, to be quite honest. So, you know, I, I would say that we're, you know, ambivalent on that. If council wants to change those sites six through ten and have this part of the reservation system, that's fine. That doesn't really, I think, affect operations really one way or the other, to be honest. So that's, again, that's, that's, that's council's decision on that. If you want, I can go through all the advantages and disadvantages, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell for sites six through ten. And then the resident priority reservation, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know what we're supposed to ask questions, but on that piece, the emergency placement for mechanical issues, that doesn't happen very often, where we need to use those because it's something wrong with our stuff that adds flexibility?
It's good to use sometimes, honestly, maybe, honestly, that usually we can get that resolved pretty quickly. But say, more so like another camper, say, somebody was in a site, they're supposed to leave on a Friday afternoon, and I had another camper coming in for the weekend, but something happened with their camper, and they can't get it to either run or a truck that they use to pull it.
Yeah.
That gives us the flexibility to be able to have an entrance open for that person, so that, you know, we don't have to deny a person coming in for...
I would say during a camping season, that, that probably happens four or five times, you know, it just... Throughout the year. It's not constant, certainly. It just gives you, it's basically, those sites give you a little bit of flexibility.
Sure.
Yeah. As far as the resident priority reservation period, what we would like to do, because we've so heavily advertised that, that the campground opens for reservations January 2nd, we don't make Denton work January 1st, but January 2nd. And so we've kind of gotten people trained to that. So what we'd like to do, if we could, and if, again, if council can come to a conclusion, is to have that in December, where we give, we give residents, literally, it can be a month, it can be three weeks, it can be whatever. Because you have to have proof of residency, it would have to be done in person. There's a possibility they could always scan something and send it to Denton, but it has to be done in person, because there's really no other way to coordinate that technologically-wise to make sure that they are resident.
Not open it up online?
If you open it up online, and we're going to have to go back through and figure out, "Is that person really live here? Does their name match who the actual trash billing is?" It's just, it gets really, it gets hairy. Not that people aren't honest. But it gets hairy. So what we would say is, you know, in December, or we could even change it, you know, the coming year, you could even change it to a different timeframe. But in December, generally, you know, village residents could come in, and they could book sites for the coming year, and then that would give them that priority registration period, and then January 2nd, we would open it up to the rest of, you know, the folks.
You can still do it on, in, online on the system in, in December? You'd be putting it in the system?
You'd have to be in person.
No, 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 you would be using the system in December?
Oh, he can.
Yeah, okay.
We can, we can backdoor, we just have the system for online purposes, we have it shut down, so you can't book. Because otherwise, you would literally have people booking for every Fourth of July for the next, you know, ten years. So, so yes, manually, we can do it, absolutely. Yeah. Yep.
And I kind of put a schedule, this is proposed, I mean, flexible, but I thought one of the big points I wanted to kind of point out was, I mean, anytime a normal year, the normal hours, nine, five, it's fine to come, give a call, and, and, something to kind of make your, all your reservations, but I wanted to make sure there were some nights where I would, like, come in later, so that would give people opportunities where they did work or whatnot, they have a chance to come in. And even if, say, they, so they were only available on weekends, if they call and, you know, we can figure something out, make it work as long as they're resident to do that, so.
Yeah.
And we did also mention on here, kind of, they wanted to make it so that they could, we'd only limit them to reserve a two, a maximum two camp sites for any day, and that's mainly because of the holidays and stuff, like Fourth of July and Memorial Day. Someone's gonna go in and reserve it on fifteen sites for them and all their friends, so we thought two seemed fair, and then, you know, if they want to have a family member or somebody else who's a second one, likes that one, that's fine.
I don't know, I go back and forth on that one. I, I mean, just reserving two, because it's like for the residents, so it's like, you know.
The thinking is this, you know, the priority's given to the resident, but the priority shouldn't be given to a resident who then books fifteen sites and then doles it out to non-residents.
I think he's like, he's gone to one.
Oh, you're saying just one site? Oh.
Because, you know, it, it's still just, the, for the resident, kind of like, hey, if you're going to have, you know, three or four relatives all come together on the site, let's just say, you know, like, you're, that's just going to be, you know, game runs, like, hey, then on January 1st or 2nd, whatever, they, like, everybody just gets on and books, or they can book one. I, I don't know, I don't know.
You see a lot of families, though?
Especially all these, but in general, rather, yes.
We do.
Even with the residents, especially, Fourth of July last year, I think eighty, almost eighty percent of the sites were Plain City addresses, not just the all residents. But most of them were booked in groups, like, you know, almost, a lot of them, three or four, five camp sites. But we kind of thought, you know, I mean, you're still offering the benefits to the residents, say, hey, you get one site, and then maybe your parents are coming in, and then one of your bright kids, whatever, you can have two sites, it's still a benefit to the resident in a sense.
But that's, that's completely up to council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the idea that you can minimum, you know, maximum to the two, you know, if you go to one, it's, I don't mind having to, them being able to reserve two sites. I mean, it's not like they're booking eight and having a whole book, have a whole block that's out, that's just for them, because I think that's what's happening, if you get that limited...
You get something.
It's, it's, sounds like it's, yeah.
They said, "Go book one, and they go get their neighbor to book one for their parents or something."
Yeah.
People are working around to be there, right?
And, and back and forth, so, and that's like, you know, do you book it, like, you know, like, I'm just going to pick, like, monsters, like, if they can, like, it's for them, but, like...
To, to your point.
Like, but they're here, because we're here, so it's advantage of residents, we're, like...
It's still benefit.
Yeah, still benefit. And I'm going to go, look at it, I think, of our residents, say, one percent of our total state at that new site, pro...
Holidays would probably be the exception to that rule, because like, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, opening day for PCAB baseball, heavy residents. So that's, again, that's up to council.
I think, yeah, I, I think I'm, I think it is, there. Shown opinion of that.
Okay.
Two's fine.
Okay. All right. So I'll go through all the rationale for that, but basically...
So...
Sure.
Are, yes, the fourteen, what, thirty, forty? Is it, you stay for three days, you have to have fourteen, off, on that? Like, how, like, how is that going to work? If I do twenty-eight days, I leave, it's, I want to thirty, back, back, in place, am I, like...
So if the goal is for council, i- if the goal in council's mind is to limit long-term stays, then it's not so much that you're here for four days and you leave and come back, it's here to try to parse out and not have folks stay for sixty, ninety, a hundred and sixty in a row, if that's my understanding of what council's desire is. So by doing that thirty days and then having to leave for fourteen days, it, it does hamper people who will come back and back and back, because it's really challenging. Unless you are a local resident, it's challenging if you're camping, and let's say you're a travel nurse, for instance, which we get a decent amount of, it's challenging to take thirty days and try and book somewhere else in the summer for fourteen days and come back and, and do that, it's really challenging to do that. So that's what kind of cuts down on some of those long-term stays, is that break in between.
That's why I was saying, you know, there's some sites that we could have that could be long-term for those people that are, you know, either traveling nurses, traveling doctors, or, you know, that are, like, how, how many people there are there for long-term? Do you guys know that, that percentage?
Like the percentage or number every year?
Yeah. I mean, there are quite a few, like...
Yeah, we pulled that, um...
I know, and I can't remember, you guys told us that, and I can't remember the number.
Typically, I would say in the summertime, you, going into fall slash winter, you're probably going to have probably anywhere from six to ten or eleven that are, would be full-time, they're, they're there because they're working, or, you know, whatever situation.
But you can't...
Why can't you have, why can't we have certain sites for those people that are not...
But you could, but, say, it's going to be a traveling nurse or someone in there long-term. I'm just saying, I'm playing the other side, like, you, you have to think about... you have to think about people that are utilizing our perk on a daily basis, but then, like, there's... People that, you know, are great tenants that come in and inhabit, like our visitor this evening. But you also have to think of the other end, and that was what brought this whole conversation about, is that you're not always gonna get those long-term campers in.
Yeah, I agree. It's hard, it's hard to make that distinction of, like, a travel nurse is okay, but a travel construction person is not okay. Right? I think we've kind of set our goal is to move long camping. While that may hurt some folks or professions that we, you know, may be okay with, we have to, we have to stick with our overall direction and goal. I would challenge a little bit to take the 14 days down to like 11. So you're not two weekends, it's one weekend, so it'd be like Monday to Thursday. My math is roughly right, like 11. So you're not out for two, two weekends in a row, one weekend in a row, but still 11 days that I think would deter the person from trying to go back and forth. I don't know, that was my, my initial thought was like, it's four days, like you're out for, like, during the week, right? What's the, what's the limit of deterring that long-term, right? I don't know, either is four enough? Is 14 too many? Is 11 okay? Like...
At least to state campgrounds and most of these other states, it tends to be two.
So with the state campgrounds, you're 14 days in one campground, you can go to 14 days in another campground, 14 days. I think, and the reason the state has that is they're trying to maximize the utilization of all their different state campgrounds. It makes sense. So if someone's not, you know, I don't know, I know when we discussed, when we started this discussion, there's no magic way of knowing, there's no magic way of knowing. I can't pinpoint what revenue reduction would be. We don't know.
We're not gonna know until we implement, but we also have to listen to our residents. And if they've come to us and asked, like, we want options to be able to book first, and then also we want to allow our family members the flexibility to book, which that would, you know, this will give, it'll free it up and allow extended family members the chance to book a little bit more freely. I feel that's the direction.
I mean, the circle I have is like, we have a campground that really doesn't have an identity. Are we a campground? Are we parked? Where are we? We're a municipal entity at a public park. I've spent more time on this than I've ever wanted to get campground and sites, but looking around the state, the state is, you know, I'm trying to sit there and find what's equal to us, a municipality or government stuff. You look at the state, a state campground is basically two weeks, 14 days, a rolling three-day period. That's what, correct me if I'm wrong. I've looked at Stowe, Ohio, is a municipality that has a park. Theirs is basically the same thing. It's like 15 days and a 30-day period. The places that are municipal parks do basically two weeks and have to have the other half gone. It's half the month. It is not set up for long-term camping. We are a long-term camping spot because there's nothing near the central Ohio area, and our cost is very cheap. The Albin campground down off of 40, down by Patel Darby there, they're... Now, they do have some more, it's like full hookups, I believe, but their cost is $75 a night, I believe. Other ones in the area are 50-plus dollars a night, looking around Delaware, all around kind of this, call it the central Ohio bubble.
Yeah, like state parks are kind of in that range?
State parks are, I think, they vary. Some are like, depending on the time of year, $35, $41. They kind of have some flex pricing. The state fairgrounds down Ohio Expo Center, they're a straight $50 a day for their sites. So, you know, they get people coming for whatever's going on there. So I don't think they have any state limits down there, but...
Whatever. Yeah, what are we?
We're, like, ours is like, we're about 40, is it $33 per grass site up?
$33 for a grass site, I think. Is it 35 and then 38?
Yeah, we're 33 for the grass sites, we are 40 for the gravel sites and 45 for the hookups.
That's...
If you're a senior or military or a resident, you get...
You get a discount. You do get a discount.
You tend to follow a little cheaper. We, it doesn't cost compare since that's kind of hard to compare.
To your point, it is very hard to cost compare because the state park with its amenities and hiking trails and lakes, it's very different than us, but we are, we are a bit unique in that respect because I think that the reason that the pastime has become so popular is we are so close to Dublin and Hilliard and Columbus with all the events that are going on. Tons of people for soccer and Marysville BMX and even, you know, our own baseball. So we're just a different, we're just different.
I've read the Google reviews, I've been on different RV camping sites, reading what the reviews are and everything, and, I mean, overall, you...
We get great Google reviews.
They comment the staff, you know. That gets, I know he's there, but, I mean, comments of the park are there. It's no kind of camping, you know. It seems like lots of, for kind of the site, for, for that trap, it's just... But it's, like, yeah, long-term camping for all, and they check, that's why.
I think that's why it became very popular, you know.
Well, at 2020, we extended, this is when camping was extended, like, 2020, kind of when a lot of people were camping. And so that's kind of when this all, like, started morphing into the long, the long-term, because we used to be two weeks, like our long, like our long-term day. But then there was that opportunity for the revenue on the side. I would like to see us keep the same rates for the residents on that, like if you're, but then up the rate. And I think that that will help to offset that loss of revenue, because if people really want to be here, they will pay, be a camp buddy.
So it started going up when we went year-round. What was that, 2018, 2019 is when you guys winterized all that stuff?
Yes, well, because we put in the new gravel sites with the new water that wouldn't freeze, so we were able to offer winter camping. And that did, right before that, it started to coincide, then, you know, then COVID hit. And then, quite frankly, the explosion of growth in central Ohio also has a huge amount to do with our revenue increase because of building and construction going on. I mean, that's where we get a lot of, you know, construction workers, which, no hate towards them at all. They come, they sleep here, and they pay their bills, and they go home to West Virginia, wherever they go, and for the weekend. So, you know, they've been, that's, I think that's where you saw everything coming together, the COVID, the increase in camping, people just generally wanting to camp, and then also with the, you know, boom in central Ohio. So I think that has a lot to do with us. And then we are, to your point, we're known as a very quiet, we're not a party campground. We have great police, thank you, chief, and the officers. We have great, you know, police coverage, and word gets around the camping community. So.
I'm supportive of Mayor Carr's suggestion to keep the resident rate and up the non-resident rate. That seems to be in line with what we're doing with the pool and everything like that. And it goes the priority to residents. So that part, I'm, I mean, I don't know if we're talking about that because it wasn't in here, but I think that the more we can do that across the amenities, the better. So I'm certainly okay with that part.
Do we have, and I guess Justin or Haley, we want to make sure that if we do that, that we make sure that we get rates in place and time. If we keep the resident rate the same, then we're fine for the December. Our key is to get, we'd like to have residents have December priority.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that part, I'm looking around the room, I think the resident priority is a no-brainer, right? Everyone's, everyone's comfortable with that. And I think that the, I'm okay with holding the resident rates for this year, certainly. I don't see anyone disagreeing. So those two things, I think you can move forward with, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable with what's proposed. I can see all the merits with everyone saying, so if there was a big argument, I could see it, but this also seems, if this is what staff's proposing, I'm not gonna, nothing in here that I know better, really, so.
I think the, I think we need to, Chairman, what, you say for three nights, I come back the next weekend and the next weekend? You know, what, for the short step, what is the...
I assumed, and again, listening to what council's input was and feedback, we assume that short-term stays were status quo.
Yeah, there's no...
You're just open for business and people come and camp and they leave, and, you know, so you still have transient people. And that's always a weird word to use, but that's what we say in the camping industry. Transient means short-term, in and out, like they're traveling from one place to the other. So you would still keep that status quo. You know, our understanding was it was the long-term length of stay that was the issue. So that's really what we address.
Okay. So you could say every, you could say every Friday, next Saturday night, come back next Friday, Saturday night, come back next Friday. There's no, there's no limits on that.
I think you could solve what your concern is. It's say, you could talk about 10 days, you know, say 14, just as written.
11.
You, 11, so you could just say not to exceed 40 days, like a 30 days and a 40-day period, and they can leave. They come back, it's on their, you know, you could do that, solve that problem.
Keep track, like, and I'm just kind of using my example, hey, if we say 30 days, you have to go on 14, but if you stay for 20, you leave for two, you come back, you recycle it. Is it one, and come up with the aggregate of the, that 30 days, 14 off within that period of time, whatever that max, like, you would, like, hey, you can, you could come in and, like, whatever it is, and, you know, you hit, like, whatever your max stay is, would that be?
We can keep track of that. It would be manually done, but it would be fairly easy to notice. We'll say, just being the power of us, once we open up reservations, a lot of stuff in the summer, just holidays, I mean, it's starting to go down entire weekends. People aren't gonna be able to, one, two, and three, every day reservation because there are gonna be so many...
There's so many holes, you can't...
Right.
It's, it gets difficult for those, before we were kind of moving them around and making exceptions to kind of make that work, but I said that's not the problem anymore. So I, we want, we're kind of in aggregate of the three, three days or 14 days off, 40, 40-day period, we could track that. For a weekend, it's not gonna hit them.
Yeah, doesn't seem like it's gonna, it just doesn't seem like it's gonna be come up, right? Like, I hear, I hear.
And the worst is, I think we're only talking about like...
There's only, there's one resident that books quite a few weekends of the summer, and then one family that's in the Plain City area that books a lot of weekends, but that, yeah, doesn't really have a lot of...
Okay, so with clarification of that, then I guess I would remove my comment on the 11-day, leave 14 days. 14 days, only if you stay 30, then you have to leave 14. So I'm good with that.
Yeah, again, I just want to be mindful of staff time, too, because it is, part of it is definitely a manual process. He's in the reservation system constantly, as I was. So you see the names. You start to pick up on things pretty quickly, so. But some portion of it has to be manual.
And I love so, so, you know, call me. I'm not fit to bump up organization.
Ferguson, any comments?
Any other comments or clarifications you need from us that you feel are missing?
Um, so if my understanding right now of where we stand is that 30 days is good, 14 days you would leave, then you could potentially come back for 30 days. Again, keeping in mind that it may actually knock some people out of the system just because we get so heavily booked. So that honestly doesn't seem a huge concern to me, but...
Of six through 10?
Yeah, that's one question we do need to clarify. We will need to, we need to know whether we leave it status quo or whether we need to make it part of the reservation system. Again, I think we're fairly agnostic on that. It comes in handy at times, but it's also not a hill that we'll die on if you need to make it part of the reservation system. We just need to change maps and things on the website and...
And those people would still be held for 70 days on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That doesn't change the rules for site six through 10. Yeah.
So, I don't know, I guess I would say, if it's for emergency stuff and kind of give you guys some flexibility, do you need four? Can you make it two? Or if it's, if it, if a campground fills up, then you can off, offer up those, maybe two or three of those sites and leave one for emergency stuff? I don't know, I just...
We don't, somebody can ship up if they want.
But if there's a weekend that fills up in December, residents, everything else is booked up. Can you then book six through 10? That would, they should probably know now, right?
Be one or the other, pretty much.
Yeah.
I agree.
There's a little possibility we change it, but it also opens up more of a reserve, so that gives people more...
Yeah.
I mean, reservation you can just do on your phone. I mean, it's...
Well, right now, they can not book those.
I know they can't book those sites, but I mean, if it's one, you just, I mean, I don't know, just, I still go back like this, you know, state park, every site has to be registered and, you know, instead of trying to use that where I'm like...
I thought they had, I thought state parks had some last night.
I appreciate how Mr. Lewis said, do you just take two spots and just leave them as like overflow for those examples?
Would you prefer that or just skip, get rid of them and make them part of the reservation system?
Yeah, it's like one or two.
You said it's only, it only happened four or five times throughout the year. And so you go to, instead of four, go to two, then you actually have that flexibility there. And if somebody comes in and wants to book, you know, then you have that opportunity, you know, that's off-line.
Four seems...
I like to have her...
I guess a walk-up is different, but for an emergency standpoint, just to make your life easier, sounds like two minutes. I agree. It's nice to have one or maybe two, but I would say two minutes.
I would do two, because one's booked and you still have an extra, an extra room if something does happen.
Yeah.
What, she was four with, just had four sites? I'm saying that... We have five, or is it not?
Five, oh, no.
Oh, six, seven, yeah, five, you don't...
You don't need all of them necessarily for that. Especially right now, typically we use our long-term people to shuffle them in and we don't have anything else available to do to book, which obviously is no longer an issue. So that solves that, that can do occasionally that chemical issues or some days keepers, a lot thicker, and it's gonna be a really tight spot, and so they're putting there, and that just kind of gives us flexibility.
So, so Mr. Senz, the only thing I see, to answer your question, is in December, it opens up three more if we go with the two spots. It opens up three more spots for residents to book for July.
That's pretty much.
That, to me, that's what you're doing, is you're, you're opening up more spots in that December period. Because after that December period, it's non-resident anyways, and it's kind of like, we're not, that's not the problem we're trying to solve. So it just opens up three additional spots for July 4th, opening day, Memorial Day, if that, that seems like what we're trying to aim for, so I'm okay with it. But to answer your question of five versus two versus three, I think Mr. Daley pointed out, like, it's good to keep a couple, but do we need five? So that's the only way I see it, is just you're opening up more spots for July 4th residents, basically.
Yeah.
So they might not even get booked, otherwise.
That's what I'm at, is just make three, three or four more, just bookable, just, if people, you know, online, they can, it's...
So keep two open.
And I will, I will say, like, for Fourth of July this year, if, when they're open, some, you know, first come, first served, if they're open, like, I have a list of, wait, there's some people, they're resident, I'm gonna call them first.
Sure, yeah, exactly. This will just give it the...
So if those simple, you know, that, do this, if you want, remind them, you know, how that's...
So I'm hearing, keep two of those sites. We'll determine which sites they are, but keep two of those, like, six through 10, open for whatever.
Yeah, I mean, your guys is kind of, hey, what do you feel like you need flex?
Yeah, I don't...
Okay. So, yeah, so everybody's good with what's being proposed. The pricing, looking at increasing for non-residents. Can we include that in camping as well? I know that's not part of this, but...
We can, sure.
I don't think that's a bad...
I guess I'll get back to, do we have enough time to, because legislatively, if we don't have meetings in December? I'm real concerned that we won't get the...
Legislative action, this is an ordinance.
Yeah, we'll have to adjust rates policy. So that'll be on the next council agenda, but as long as nothing's changing for residents.
Yeah, okay, okay, cool.
And we'll have, we still have another meeting here and probably two in December, so.
Okay. All right, then we will, we will tackle some proposed rates for non-residents. Is that it?
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next item is notice legislative authority, Ohio Division of Liquor Control notice of permit application for Reforma Union LLC, Siete Catrinas transfer from E. Sembrero. Mr. Dryer, if you'd like to give us the update?
Absolutely, so, thank you, Mayor. Pooce, uh, this is for, for, for permits, uh, for E. Sembrero, for Siete Catrinas. If you want me to, if you, uh, just, uh, if you have a full word, objection, all the consent, the required documentation, if council has, uh, uh, here, and just need to determine if that can help the county seize more, but this is just to transfer those, those three from here, so the current.
Can't see a problem transferring that at all.
Nope.
No.
Thank you. And I have a couple of motions for, to get our committees updated, so we have, I would accept a motion to appoint Beth Walker to serve on the Economic Development Committee with a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second. Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. D. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Senes.
Yes.
Yep.
Motion passes six days to zero days, and another motion, I would accept a motion to reappoint Chandler Engel to serve on the Economic Development Committee with a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yep.
Mr. Senes.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Mr. D. Hall.
Yes.
Motion passes six days to zero days. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance forty-two dash twenty-twenty-five, rezoning of eighty-nine point two-one acres at Zero Cemetery Pike, parcels number thirty-five dash zero 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 one six, and number thirty-five dash zero 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 one seven, from Darby Township Agricultural A1 to Planned Unit Development, PUD.
Motion to approve ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Mr. Senes.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Motion, ordinance, ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-five is approved with six days to zero days. Second reading resolution fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing the village administrator to apply to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund program.
Move. Twenty-five?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Senes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. D. Hall.
Yes.
Resolution fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five is approved, six days to zero days. Moving into new business, first reading ordinance forty-three dash twenty twenty-five, approving